Testing one, two, three. This will be the September 4th, 2013 City Council meeting.
I'd like to call to order a City Council regular meeting, the City of Satellite Beach, September 4th, 2013, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilman Montanaro for a moment of silence and a pledge.
You would join me as I give thanks. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to serve the residents of our great city. We're thankful for the police and fire employees who protect our lives, the public works people who keep our infrastructure viable, all those who bring the recreation programs to our young and old, and all employees in the City Hall who make it all work so seamless. We ask that the decisions we make tonight allow our city to make efficient economic decisions through the next year. Please help our nation's leaders in their decision on the issues in the Middle East, keep our troops who are deployed throughout the world safe, and bring them home to their loved ones. Amen. You'll join me in pledging religions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which we stand, one nation, on the ground, in the US Constitution.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Citizens' Comments. I will take comments from citizens first on non-Agenda items. So the floor is open. Okay, bring back the council, no comments. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, City Council Comments. Who'd like to start?
Tomorrow we have a regular monthly meeting of the South Beaches Coalition. The Coalition has not met for the past four months primarily due to quorum issues, and so it's one of the things that I will be discussing with the Coalition tomorrow. And then the other thing on our agenda for tomorrow is this inter-local agreement that the cities need to sign to update our relationship with the TPO.
Thank you.
I have a few things. First off, I'd like to recognize City Resident Joanne Reagan. On the fifth annual Raz Eschah Blood Drive she hosted at First Way Financial, fifty-seven pints of blood were donated on Saturday, August 24th. This event has been held at Pelican Beach Clubhouse over the last three years, and the city partnered with Joanne on this event. And it's great to see this event still going on. Many Satellite Beach residents took part in this, and I just want to congratulate her on keeping the gift of life flowing. On Friday, August 30th, the City Manager, all department heads, and I visited the Parish Occupational Health Clinic and Pharmacy in Titusville. This clinic is run by Take Care Health Systems, which is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Walgreens. Take Care runs many facilities across the nation. This clinic serves the city of Titusville and its employees and their families. It also serves the employees of Parish Medical Center and their families. It's also cut Titusville's city healthcare costs substantially utilizing this program. The facility was very impressive, and I think it's something that Satellite Beach needs to look into in the future because I think healthcare costs are going to continue to escalate, and this is a great avenue for us to look at going forward. And the last thing I have was while watching the morning news, I learned that charges were dropped against the Satellite Beach man who was arrested several months ago and accused of making bombs in his home here in Satellite Beach. He was released because evidence gathered before obtaining a search warrant, therefore the evidence was inadmissible. The morning news clip showed Satellite Beach police had, you know, vehicles and officers in the news clip, making it appear that Satellite Beach Police had failed to, you know, follow proper procedure. The fact is that Satellite Beach was not the arresting agency, but was merely present to provide backup in the city because the individual lived in our city. So I just wanted to get that out for the record, and I know the chief is here and can address anything that pertains to that if it comes up, but that's all I have. Thank you.
I've had an opportunity today to go up to FSU, that's a long drive, it's a 700-mile round trip, to do a presentation on our fall prevention program here in Satellite Beach and our efforts towards taking care of our caregivers. We had 270 people in attendance, and the furthest person that came was from Greenland for the program. So again, just want to, you know, it was nice to be able to get up in front of that many people and talk about the efforts that we're doing here for fall prevention and taking care of our elders. So again, Chief, I want to thank you for the program that you've done, and Chief, Police Chief also as well. Gentlemen, you've done a great job, and it's nice to have this out in the community and across the nation. So thank you very much. That's all I have.
I had the opportunity to have lunch today, and the guest speaker was House Secretary Kristofoli. I spoke a lot about, again, the state of our state and the legislation, some of the things that have been passed, streamlined permitting process, and this great couple hours spent with our representatives.
Thank you. I have no comment. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, City Attorney's Report.
I have no.
Thank you. City Manager Report. Courtney?
The first thing is, I did want to remind the community that we do have a Beach Levers and Trash Haters Gathering at Pelican Beach Park at 8:00 AM on the second Saturday of every month for beach cleanups. So if you would like to participate, the next one is on September 14th, 2013, sorry. And then the Keeper of Our Beautiful supplies all the bags, and you can just show up. You don't have to call on schedule, and it's a great way to get involved in cleaning up the beach and getting involved with our community. For informational items, I did want to let you know that the Public Works Department will be working hard to upgrade some of our recreational facilities using in-house staffing and contractors, particularly at the racquetball courts and then also the DRS Community Center. And then also, the sidewalk network will be getting some improvements with trip hazard repairs throughout the city, and hopefully we'll be addressing the majority of those in the next few weeks. Again, as Councilman Montanaro described, we did go through the health clinic with the city of Titusville. Their staff was also there to help us learn the ins and outs of how they accomplished what they did. I think we've learned a lot from that trip. We will be sending out letters inviting some other community partners to meet with us here at City Hall to discuss how to move forward with that and if they want to. Luckily, our gearing group is our healthcare consultant, you're going to hear a presentation from them later on this evening, they are familiar with those clinics, they've helped put them together, and luckily we have a consultant that has that background. So we will be asking for their assistance to move forward with that. They will be participating with us in getting that done, and I've asked them at least by next year to know whether or not a structure like that would work for us. So hopefully by the end of the year, we will know whether that is a viable option for us to do. In terms of, oh, I also wanted to thank Lenore Alexa, our city clerk, for guiding all of our officials, board members, and council members into 100% compliance in getting the statement of financial interest forms in. So that is like herding cats, if you've ever sat in her position and tried to do that, but we are 100% compliant, and we thank her for her hard work. Yes, thank you. I did have a request actually by Councilwoman Deanan to look into a September 11th event, like a ceremony, and we did look into that. We have an event currently done by the VFW, which we actually go to every month or every year. It's at 9:30 in the morning, and it's at the VFW, it's a flag raising, and our Fire Department and Police Department attend that, as well as our department heads. So we will be doing that this year again. If council wants us to, you know, look into doing something on the city side, then, you know, please let us know, but we couldn't pull it together something for us that fast. And then also, we've been always participating with the VFW, so we would have to change that relationship.
Yeah, actually, I just want to clarify, I really didn't want us to sponsor an event, I just wanted a proclamation read declaring it Patriot Day.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
All right, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's okay.
So that's something I wanted to get out to the community, that is an event, a ceremony honoring those that lost their lives in 9/11, and it is at the VFW on September 11th at 9:30. In terms of action items, I do have, council asked for a request on the town hall meeting. We have, we're recommending that the, we're probably going to be going through a lot of budget, or not budget workshops, but workshops regarding planning and land use and 100 acres and all that. So we would recommend going back to a quarterly scenario for your town hall meetings because of the amount of meetings you will likely have in the future. And I just put together a schedule for you to save the back and forth, and if that works for you, we'll go ahead and help you schedule your town hall meetings and do all that for you, and maybe put a little bit more advertising into it, advertise it on Facebook and things like that to get the word out better for your meetings. So if that's acceptable to you, then we'll go ahead and move forward with that.
Francis?
I'm fine with that. I do have a question though, because I know I hosted a town hall meeting the first of this year, and I think the mayor, you also did one. Did anyone else do one?
Well, there's a reason for this order, and that's because two of you are going, may be running for election, and I wanted to make sure that that isn't, your town hall meetings didn't run into that time period. So your town hall meetings-
Oh, I wasn't worried about next year, I was just confirming that the only two that hosted town hall meetings this year were them myself.
Right, so that's why, that's why this order's there.
Okay.
Just to leave that out. Save the come-
Everybody, fine.
Okay.
Councilwoman Deanan, fine, Francis?
I have one more item, though. I do, I did want to address two issues. I think there's a need for us to put on the webpage a kind of a "Did You Know?" or a "Facts vs. Fiction" section, because there seems to be a lot of discussion and misstatements about the county agreement that we just did, and one of those was on the Raised on Hoecakes blog, and this was a posting that was done on August 23rd entitled "The Right Thing at the Right Time," in which they indicated that Mr. Ellis sought records concerning Satellite Beach from the Economic Development Commission and was being stonewalled there as well. "The EDC is the same agency that on August 7th, 2013, the council voted to join. The cost of joining was $2,500 and gives Satellite Beach a seat on the Board of Directors of the EDC. Is it a coincidence that the same EDC was not complying with public records requests for Satellite Beach that Satellite Beach was paying to join the EDC? We don't know, but there is an appearance of impropriety there that is somewhat tasteful at the very least." Now, when I read this, because I get phone calls and people say, "Oh, you got to read Hoecakes," and when I read that, I thought, you know, this is a little paranoid even for Mr. Ellis, so I called the EDC and made sure twice that, you know, that there was no records request to the EDC for Satellite Beach from Mr. Ellis's office. So we're going from, and many times there's some errors in this web that I try, you know, I overlook, but this one was just an absolute fabrication, and I don't think things like that should go on without being addressed. So there was no records request by Mr. Ellis to the EDC. They were not being stonewalled, and the only connection we have to the EDC is that we joined the EDC to get their assistance to develop the 100 acres, and that's pretty much the truth. So we have public records supporting that. If you'd like to get those, you can certainly make a records request. The other issue that I wanted to address is during that same day that our county agreement was on the agenda for the county, there was a radio show, Mr. Bill Mick had a lively discussion about this agreement, and I took some notes about that discussion because I was absolutely floored at the issues that were brought up. Number one, I disagreed with that entire broadcast, I have to say, but there was two items on there about facts that I have to contradict, and the first was, he said that immediate previous councils put money in the reserves and didn't do anything to reduce the reserves, and that the reserves are low because of past councils before that, which is not true. All of the councils had something to do with those reserves going down, and I think we all need to understand that the reserves are down because of a bad economy, and that's it. Two, the other issue was brought up, he said that criminal act, this was a criminal action of previous councils profiting and benefiting from CRA actions, which is absolutely ridiculous, and I can't say that enough. So I think we need to make sure that the community knows that when you're listening to these things, you're reading these things, that these are not news sources and their opinions, and at this point, they're fabricating facts to make it livelier, I guess. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for City Manager? Here are none. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Award Presentation by the Police Department. Chief, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At this point, I would like to have Commander Hodge come on. I would like him to give the presentation, as he is the current president of PAL, and he also was the one that wrote the recommendation, and did make a nomination for Liza as well. So I just wanted, I wanted him to give a little bit of background.
Good evening, thank you. I'm very proud to be here representing our PAL programs. In this award, mostly I'm mostly just here to introduce Liza and all the great things that she's done and give credit where credit is due. Our PAL program started as a youth student in the year 2000, and we've had some just tremendous successes with our PAL program. We've had nine state awards, we've had five PAL Youth of the Year Awards, and if you think we started in the year 2000, we've had five of our kids receive the state award for PAL kid, I mean, that's a pretty good percentage. And Liza sure represents the cream of the crop when it comes to that. She's donated 1,500 hours since her inception into the PAL program. She, excuse me, she has been a member of the YTC program, the Youth Leadership Program. She's participated in committees at the PAL events, and she was the 2011 PAL Girl of the Year, and if I could, I would like to ask, let me inform our PAL record firm, and she's going to give you some more details about Liza's accomplishments.
Talking about Liza is one of the easiest things I've ever had to do. I was just approached to talk about her today, and it's not a problem. Liza is one of the type of young ladies, if you give her something to do, you never have to look back. She's always done it, you don't have to question it, it's done. She is always there to lend a hand, she will do the, not only does she do the fun stuff, but when it comes down to getting the behind the scenes where she never gets credit, she's always there. She is now a member as a mentor of our local PAL group, and as a state representative of Satellite Beach PAL to the state and now to national PAL. She's there as a mentor to help the kids as they come along and they go through with their committee work. I could go on and on about Liza, she's just like my daughter, and this is the first time I have a crowd talking about her, so that's good. But she's someone that just deserves this recognition, not only as our state PAL Girl of the Year, but as national PAL, because the whole entire nation came from Satellite Beach and kids like.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your attention, and it seemed like a lot before the time, but honestly, I enjoyed every bit of it, and I'm grateful that I'm this year and am one of these children, and I even picked a class, because I'm, I'm going to college now, and I actually have a class called "Community Involvement," so they can't get rid of me in the class, you should know, so I worked that out for a few years. But grateful that that is our program offering around, and I'm grateful that the city program's offering around, and thank you very much.
Before I finish, I do want to point out that Sergeant Craig Sherman, who's been a PAL liaison for the Police Department, has been with the program since 1996 when we started Teen Zone, and of course, Laura Dean's wife and Liza's mother have been working for PAL for several years now in front office, and certainly, this kind of support and involvement is part of her successes, and so we want to recognize that, and all that they've done to authorize it to get to where she is. Hang on just one second. While we're here, as many of you know, December 5th, 2012, I was asked to be the acting city manager for the city of Satellite Beach. That happened a lot for midnight, Mayor Hodge was there after the meeting, and after the meeting, I looked at him, I said, "We probably should go to Station Hogg for a couple minutes," and he said, "I'll meet you there." So we went, and we enacted a plan in place, and within 30 minutes, members were working plans in place and brackets the acting police chief, as it was designed, as it was intended to do. And to stay seamless is really not even a definite rule of justice, but I've been trying to get here, I know you're thinking, "Well, that's kind of a long time ago, if you guys are that busy, you couldn't put a plaque together quick enough." Well, we've had it for a long time, but we got that busy, and trying to work out schedules and trying to make it somewhat a surprise to have this family and a wife here. I wanted to make sure I could get everybody here, and I had a good audience, and I wanted to make sure that he understood the appreciation that I had. And so the plaque is dated May 15th, which is how long it's been since we've worked and things have happened. Before I read the plaque, the mayor also wrote a letter that I'd like to read, it says, "On behalf of me and the Satellite Beach City Council, I just have a personal express of appreciation of the great job you did as acting police chief from December 6th, 2012 to April 14th, 2013. It was further moment when we asked Jeff Pearson, the acting city manager, to step up and play and help us in the county. While I'm personally impressed with how the Police Department carried on Jeff's actions, while I'm busy with the, and our work as a team, how it worked and functioned business as usual, and there was no issues along the way, you did a great job in your efforts and sacrifices as acting police chief for notice, and I appreciate it. Good job, thank you, Mayor Grant." I can't tell you that anybody who's in business, in an organization, a part of a team, you just don't really understand, if you haven't been there, how comforting it is to know that the people that you work with have the ability to step up when asked, can and will do it, and things go on, because you just don't know what the future holds. And this city and these residents are entirely supportive of us to not make sure that this business will function and this Police Department will go. And to have people of the caliber of Commander Hodge and our other staff members, Derek Frost and Jennifer Perry, to have people like that with years of experience, the corporate knowledge that they have, is just comforting, and I'm very, very, very proud to be a part of that and to work with these people. With that, I just would like to read this plaque that we have formed, and I will read that. This plaque is, I don't want to break it down, I had a video clip of you playing football in another sport.
By Florida Field?
"I served as acting police chief over the last four months, December 6th, 2012 to April 14th, 2013. I'm only responsible for the day-to-day operation, we handle it well, but also please in-depth research projects that will enhance the operation of our Police Department in the future. You did a great job, and we're very proud, recognized and appreciated." Presented by Chief Jeff Pearson and the city of Satellite Beach. And thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say to Liza, you have the most impressive resume that I have ever seen for someone, for a young person, and you are part of the reason that the city of Satellite Beach has such an excellent reputation. Congratulations to you, and keep that up. We're proud of you.
Liza, thank you for helping to make Satellite Beach a better place. I know your family has put in endless hours into PAL, and it shows, and thank you very, very much. And thank you to the Police Department. It's interesting when you get to work with the city, once we got in, when I was elected, and it goes to show you that not only do we have great department heads, we've got a lot of great people working in those departments that make the department function if the lead is not there, and the system goes on. We know it works very well in the Police and Fire Department, and it's working great now in the administrative end, and thank you all very, very much for your work. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we are going to change the Agenda Items around. We're going to go to Agenda Item Number 10, Discuss/Take Action on Proposal from the Satellite Beach Soccer Club to Provide Field Lighting at the Sports Park.
Ms. Kerr?
We have with us this evening Charlie Graham, he's with the Satellite Beach Soccer Club. He approached myself and some city folks a couple weeks ago with an idea of moving forward on lighting the soccer fields. The lighting of that complex at the sports park has been on the capital plan for some time, because it is a very expensive project, and we all know where our economy's been. It has not moved forward in its capital placement for a while. Charlie and the Satellite Beach Soccer Club became aware of two grants that are available for putting lights on the field, and with his efforts, balls started rolling, and we are moving forward to seek council permission to implement some of the lighting of this field, but in stages. So what we're here tonight to talk about is trying to put some $10,000 on reserve in our capital, from our capital, so that it would be seed money for the soccer club to use some money that they've collected, $10,000, maybe a little more, and then we can move forward in trying to either secure grants or obtain funding from additional organizations. Please keep in mind that just about every facility in Satellite Beach has either been improved or started using seed money from the city and supplementing that with the efforts of our nonprofit organizations. I don't recall any sport organization that didn't either have a grant or sponsorships with some organizations. The city just doesn't outright buy anything by themselves, recreational wise. So that's where we are tonight, discussing that. Charlie, you've done a lot of research on it, would you like to-
Yes. Would you? I'm Charlie Graham of 685 Kenwood Court in Satellite Beach, Satellite Beach resident. I was elected to the Satellite Beach Soccer Club Board about three months ago, and as ago as the Bavard Youth Soccer Organization representative. First of all, I'd like to thank all the council members for their service. So many people don't realize the time and commitment that is required to volunteer for our community. Secondly, I would like to publicly commend the city staff. Over the last couple weeks, spearheading this lighting project, I have had interactions with most departments and had had nothing but supportive assistance. Just to let you know, the Satellite Beach Soccer Club and football clubs value your time, and although most of the parents and teachers that you saw out in the parking lot would be willing to come up here and express their support, we hope that just seeing all those beautiful future leaders in uniform will suffice. I want to give you a quick summary of my background. I put myself through college working in a four-star rated American restaurant in Kansas City, Missouri. Today, it's still a wholly-owned subsidiary of Hallmark Cards. I graduated with a BS in Economics from one of the nation's best engineering schools, the University of Missouri Rolla, now renamed Missouri University of Science and Technology. You might not have heard of Rolla, but you probably have heard of MIT, Caltech, Michigan, and Georgia Tech, which we consistently beat in the Solar Car Challenger canoe race. I was commissioned in the Army as an aviator, and during my 11 years of service, I predominantly flew Blackhawk helicopters, where most of my flight time was under night vision goggles. Despite some hearing loss, the reason why I wear these silly earbuds you just saw, all the time, it was a great career. After starving for a few years as a civilian flight instructor, I landed the incredible job of becoming a MetLife Blimp Pilot. Quirky fact, there are actually more space shuttle pilots than blimp pilots in the world. I reported to a VP of MetLife on Madison Avenue in charge of sports marketing and blimp promotions. The job was super cool, and I could live anywhere in the world. I chose to live in Satellite Beach. It was a great job with the main purpose of providing TV networks with camera feeds for major sporting events, including NFL Super Bowls, Major League Baseball World Series, and World Cup soccer matches, and lots of PGA events. I did interviews with famous people, played great golf courses, argratus, and was very well taken care of, but despite living in very nice hotels, I was constantly on the road and away from my family. So about 14 years ago, I left the career of aviation and settled down in Satellite Beach. Since that time, I've been in IT for an automobile dealership group. I married my beautiful wife, Ann, who has been the registrar of the Satellite Beach Soccer Club for the last four to five years. We have children ranging from 29 down to nine, and all- We have children ranging from 29 down to nine, and all have been involved in soccer. Onto the lighting project. We need the Satellite Beach Regional Park sports park lighted for our city's best future. All our coaching is done by volunteers. They give selflessly their precious time for our children. Most of them work full-time in our community, and in a few weeks, daylight savings time will change and the hours of daylight shorten with winter, even here in paradise. I do want to recognize one of our volunteer coaches at this time. Not by name, but we have a grandfather, two children in our soccer club, that volunteers his time to coach. Now, that's not too remarkable until you find out that this grandfather lives in Georgia, Northam Jacksonville, and commutes three times a week in a season. That is dedication.
You did it on purpose, didn't you?
Now, his son-in-law, a local Satellite Beach licensed electrical contractor, has volunteered to let the Satellite Beach Soccer Club use his expertise for this lighting project. These are the type of community-minded people that live and are drawn to our great city. My goal is to someday host an Invitational Soccer Tourney one weekend a year in the month of February or March for the top four national youth teams under age 10, 12, and 15. And this tourney would be sponsored by Fortune 100 Company, like Harris, and covered by ESPN and the MetLife Blimp. The revenue generated from this one weekend a year would fund the whole year of youth soccer and all the expenses of our recreational activities. I have three economic impact studies for your viewing that I've forwarded to our city manager, and you can review them to understand the economics that go along with that. Right now, we have other funding opportunities. The Satellite Beach Soccer Club is the opportunity to receive up to $50,000 from the Florida Youth Soccer League from their soccer grant program. Last year, FYSL funded 100% of the requests and did not even meet their budgeted amount. The city can apply for a $50,000 grant that was mentioned from the Florida Youth Soccer League from their soccer grant program. I'm sorry, the city can apply for a $50,000 grant from the United States Soccer Association Grant. Additionally, the city can apply for a $50,000 a year grant through the state of Florida's FRDAP grant. However, time is of the essence with this grant, as this year's application must be received between September 16th and September 30th, a couple of weeks away. Tiny one, too. And I assure you, I will do my part to solicit contributions from both our businesses and residential community for this project. We have a commitment tonight of $10,000 from the Satellite Beach Soccer Club and $10,000 in the budget towards the first goal and first phase of this plan to come to fruition by Florida Power and Light bringing adequate electric service to the park for lighting. It would be providing installation of a 480-volt, three-phase stainless steel transformer that would be painted green. I have negotiated with FPL to reduce down the price tag of $35,000 to $30,000 for this phase. I asked the council to agree to match the extra $5,000 if we can raise $5,000. Thank you all.
Any questions? Or? I don't think at this time we'll...
I was just going to ask, answer any questions you all had. We did go ahead and reserve $10,000 in the budget for this initiative. I did indicate to the group that the $10,000 for fiscal year 14 was literally the only thing we can do, because we have just so many needs of existing facilities that we have to address. But then in fiscal year 15, if they were able to get the grants, then we would just reprioritize. So that would be something we could accommodate, but only in fiscal year 15. I think the grant spending deadlines would accommodate that if they were able to get that. So they all understand that, that that's our limit, basically.
Do we have at least a preliminary cost? I think I talked to Carrie a little bit on this the other day, for what this project will cost at the end. And also what I'd like to see, I'm all for lights. I mean, I think it's great. I've seen, I mean, I grew up at Olson Field and it was the center of town, and I think it's important for kids, and it is. It's used, the trouble is, it's parents helping after work, and it's dark and it's real hard to operate a lot of these sports at this time of year. But there's also a cost to doing this that I know we need to take a good look at. And it's not the cost to build it, it's what it's going to cost if we build it to maintain it. And do we have any, can we have, get figures in the future?
Yeah, we have not done the maintenance yet.
If we have, I'm looking here, is the $30,000 part of the final cost of the lights, or does this has nothing to do with the lights? This is just to get the electricity?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then how much is the lights at this point, if we were doing it today? Do we have any idea what they cost us?
We did get a quote from Musco, which is the lighting company that we use for our ball fields. It's kind of the top-notch one that we would go with, or we would hope to go with. The lights were $97,000 for one field, so you can figure about $100,000 for that. Installation was right around $15,000, $20,000 of those lights. And I don't know what to call that when you beef up your FPL, your power-up. I mean, in your term, power-up is about 30. We have had estimates as high as 50, but Charlie was able to speak and try to get that down. So you're probably looking at 150 to turn a light bulb on at one field.
At one field. So we would be approximately, with this 10, we're about 30 short? Because if we got the two grants, we're at 100, correct?
I spoke to people, at least at the FYSA. It appears as though the grants want to turn a light bulb on. FYSA will not fund power-up, hoping that in the future you will get lights. They want to fund lights. I'm suspecting that USAA will do this, will say the same thing. I believe that if we can get the power-up done for around 30,000, then the subsequent grants will go faster because we're kind of ready to go. This is my thought.
And so it's about 100, if we get power-up?
About 115 to 20. 115, 120 for one. But then we have power for all the other three fields. We have enough.
Right. I'm just looking at what we're going to do after we get powered up and we're going for these grants. Because obviously, if we get the grants, the soccer club's going to want us to use these grants. First off, we've got to find out if we can, if our budget will fit during that time. And second is, what is the cost?
If the grants come in and we have to budget for it in 14, we don't have the money. If they do, they come in for fiscal year 14, 15, we can reprogram.
And what is that dollar cost to us? That's, I guess, what I'm really trying to find, 120,000?
That would be the dollar cost. The FYSA, I think, was 75% of the total project is the most that they will give, up to 50,000. And USAA was...
50,000 flat. And then this last grant, the Florida Recreation and Development Assistant Program can actually grant us $50,000 per year and so redock. We just have to buy it for each year.
No, sir. We've had for that grants every year until there was no money. They haven't had any money for years.
Correct. There's, but anyway, this is, I think there's no guarantee to get any grant money. But this grant is basically being reborn. And I just found out about this from our last meeting. That's why I just kind of made a note of that. That will possibly pay for everything except for some mental funds that we've been...
Bottom line comes down to, we need $30,000 roughly just to get the transformer and power there.
Right.
Okay. So we have $10,000 that they're looking as a donation, and we're looking at possibly $10,000 that we're going to take from reserves.
Yeah, oh yeah. Well, we're not taking it from reserves, we're just reprioritizing.
We're going to reprioritize the money that we've allocated into recreation upgrades. That's just $20,000. Where's the other $10,000 coming from? I mean, we're not even talking about the lights.
I think this club is motivated. If y'all can hang on to 10 and they can have 10, we'll come up with the other 10, don't you guys think so?
Absolutely.
And another, just to Carrie?
I mean, not next month, but...
We can have it by the time we have it.
We can do that.
I got a call from the president of the Seahawks today, and they couldn't attend, they're all at practice, but they're also willing to contribute towards the transformer. I think you guys saw what it means.
Right. And that, because that helps them later, yeah.
Because they're also looking for lighting. And I actually did some research on this a few years ago, because my son was involved with the Seahawks, he's no longer involved, but Musco will finance the lighting. I mean, it's a big endeavor to go out and just buy light standards at that cost, so there's a financing plan. And if the leagues can get together along with the city and come up with a long-term plan, we can have lighting for everybody out there.
And I, you know, it's not unlike, we've done it in the past, where we get a grant opportunity and then we have to jump on that and just reprioritize to take advantage of it. So honestly, Mr. Graham, Carrie and I, Carrie was talking last week that he's accomplished more in three days than we haven't, we would have in three months. So they've really done a lot of work to get us to this point. So I think if we put the $10,000 in the budget and ask them to move on, I think we'd get somewhere.
I agree with, I mean, I go back to Frank's comments. I mean, you have to look at what's going on in our city. Kids need to have places to play. And when it gets dark out, we need lights. So, you know, I think, I think moving in this direction is probably a good thing. It affords, it affords them an opportunity to do sports. It also, obviously, it could help football also. So I'm, I have no problem moving forward with this and what we're talking about. Let's get to the council comments.
I was sitting here making a list, Mr. Mayor, of the lights that we have done, and Carrie can go back and think about this one. The city has done the lights on Olson, DeSoto, Grabowski, and Hedgecock Brother Field with the Musco. So it's something that, Dominic was on the council, and I know Frank was, and I think Frank also helped with satellites as well. So we've got a lot of experience with those lights. I think, I think it's a good initiative to do. I would stick with the Musco lights, because we've had a lot of success with those. And I think Alan could probably tell us if they've held up pretty well, but I think they've held up pretty well.
Yeah, Frank's intimate with the lights.
He's had them in his, he's had, for those of you that don't know, one set of lights landed in Frank's son's bedroom during the hurricane. So we made Frank take our lights out of his bedroom and put them back where they are. But anyway...
And by the way, those were not Musco lights, by the way. Those were the old ones, yeah.
But no, I think it's a good initiative. It's, again, it's tough economic times, and what can we afford to do? But as far as my support on it, I mean, I've supported it for years. I know Dominic and Frank have on their time on council, too. So I'm, I'll greenlight that, that's not a problem.
Mayor, or Councilman Breimer, the USA grant only uses Musco lights, and it's a credit. So we would have no choice if we were to be awarded that grant.
And actually, you know, when you talk about the Musco thing, I think it was, I think it was Frank that actually turned us towards Musco, because we went to a Florida League of Cities meeting in Orlando, and I stood there and talked to that rep forever about those lights. Frank is, why don't you go talk to them? So it was a good, it was a good direction to go. I know that they're on the, they are the lights that are used on Turner Field in Atlanta. So they're used in a lot of professional areas. But the spillover and the less likelihood of neighborhood complaints because of too much light going all over the place was one of the reasons we picked that. So, which is a concern with our Indian Harbor Beach neighbors as well. So, no, but again, I'll say it again, I'm all for it. I think it's a good, good thing. And Charlie, knock yourself out and get it going.
I have one question for Charlie. At the last meeting, you mentioned you had contacted Lighting Silence about a prototype. Have you, has that gone anywhere?
Where we arrived after I left council, I was filled with some people, especially the football club, and they had not gone, they didn't get a lot of traction when they tried to approach them. So my thought process basically involved that if we can get Musco lab lighting installed in the first field, and we have that funding, then with the, basically having the underground conduits to where the poles would be, then perhaps go back to Lighting Science at that point and say, here's a laboratory environment for you if you'd be wanting to essentially pay for the infrastructure to do it. But I think we, with their way, they just don't want to throw money at something just to say, you know, here you go getting. But I think if we have lights on the first field, it would give them a wonderful laboratory to compare against Cadillac, the best lighting that there is, i.e. Musco, and they may or may not be able to match or not match, but, you know, zero cost to the city in my thoughts.
Any further council comments?
I support this.
I have one, not to throw a tinkle in anything. The property becomes officially ours next year?
Oh, yeah. Fiscal year 16, 2016.
There's a reason. Do we have to, because of our agreement, do we have to pass any of this by the county?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure we...
Is there any motion on this?
Can we check on the date? I think it's June of next year, 2014.
We actually, we just digested this agreement pretty well with Mr. Graham, so we can make, yeah, we, and you know, he's, I knew he was an engineer the minute he walked in the door and started drawing on a chalkboard, but they, we have a plan mapped out, and part of that was having to get their approval from the county, and so we looked at that pretty closely.
Open up for council. Okay. At this time, no further council comments. I'll open up for public comments, excuse me, on this agenda item.
Steve Headley, resident Satellite Beach. I got this from another citizen late tonight, and you mentioned, Councilman Breimer, one of the issues. That field backs up to houses in Indian Harbor. The agreement that we have with the county is for the benefit and enjoyment of all Bervardians to use that property. Harbor actually has an ordinance on their sports field lights, when they can, they have to go off. I've been at tournaments, and I don't think you were there, you might have been, where the police have shown up and shut the tournament down. And my point is, I'm all for the lights, I hope everyone understands that, but this might be something, even though it's theoretically our property, we might want to also contact Harbor and say, we're looking to do this, how does this affect your ordinance and the people? Because it would be in the benefit of all Bervardians, it gives a back door into someone coming along and saying, this is not to our benefit, and watching a, you know? And I'm just saying that I'm for it, yikes, I'm for it, wouldn't have it any other way, but I think we need to just check with Harbor to check on their ordinance and how it would apply to those folks as well.
Thank you, Steve. Further public comment on this agenda item? Here are none, bring it back to council.
Need a motion on this, Courtney?
Please.
Make a motion to reserve $10,000 in the capital asset fund for FY 1314 for the purpose of providing seed money to assist in the purchase slash installation of basic FPN electric service required to power future lighting at the Satellite Beach Sports and Recreation Park.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Any further discussion from council? Here are none, one more?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. Gentlemen, good luck, thank you for spearheading this, and hopefully we'll see you back and get some grants.
Mayor, we will be bringing a request for grant approval, grant authorization forthcoming either the next meeting or the one after.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, gentlemen, for stepping forward. Okay, moving on, at this time, I am going to ask that we do Agenda Item 13, which is the budget. And at this time, I'd like to open up a public hearing on the 2013-2014 budget. Courtney?
We made very little changes to the budget. All of the changes were related to healthcare and some other items, so I just want to briefly go through the expenditure changes that we made to the draft budget. The draft, it's basically a draft adopted budget, it's on the web for the citizens to view, and then I just printed some for council. After this public hearing, if council has no input in changes, then we'll start preparing a final to place on your, in your boxes and as well as the web. We have made no changes to revenues, but we did make some changes to the expenditure line items. And the first item I'd like to go through is for the clerk's office on page 30. We made a change, adjustment to the salaries. This is because we did not include enough for that position that we currently, that we just hired. So that's a small adjustment. The rest of the adjustments are, have to do with healthcare changes, as well as changes in our liability and workers' comp. If you go to page 32, there's an adjustment in the salaries for support services. That was, that was an adjustment regarding my salary, because there was a mistake in actually making the 3% increase for me, which is not right. So we made that change. So we made that change. The rest are changes regarding healthcare and workers' comp. If you go to page 34, general government services, you'll see an increase in retiree healthcare. This is an issue with our, our changing from Health First to Cigna. We've got good news that that will likely change. We would, we'd like, keep the budget that way, but it will be a reduction, and we'll make that adjustment mid-year when we know things will hash out. Legal services, we made an increase for that, in case, in case we have any forthcoming litigation that keeps, people keep threatening to do. We made an adjustment in the communications for the beach caster to accommodate some printing costs as well as the constant contact. We made an adjustment for our liability insurance because we got a good price on it. So that is a decrease. And we did bump up the tuition and higher education reimbursements. This is a big issue for public safety. This is how they get to their next ranks, is going through their education. And so we made, we put that budget back to what it used to be prior to the falling economy, and that would, that's basically a benefit to our employees. If you go to the police department, we made an adjustment on salaries. This was because there was a part-time position that was left out accidentally, so that was adjusted. Part-time wages was adjusted, as well as some of the overtime. And then the rest of the changes have to deal with retirement, I mean, with the healthcare and workers' comp. Fire department, all of the changes we made in this department have to do with workers' comp and healthcare, I'm sorry. Building and zoning, same thing. All of the changes in the building and zoning department have to do with changes in healthcare and workers' comp. Going to public works, we made an adjustment on the overtime, and then also workers' comp and healthcare changes. We also increased their travel and business trip expenses due to training needs. We just got an audit comment from our NPDS permitting process that requires us to go to training, so we had to add some funds into that, for that endeavor. Recreation department, all of the changes in that department have to do with healthcare and workers' comp. So that is really it. Oh, I'm sorry. And please go to the CRA. I made an adjustment there to account for the possible litigation there as well.
What page do you want?
I'm sorry, I'm flipping to that right now. If you go to page fifty six, um, 57, you go to legal services. Just preparing, if we don't have any issues by mid-year, we can reprogram it back to a project.
Good. Thank you very much, council.
Also, I did have a, we will be making a correction in the capital improvement. And we made that adjustment in the CRA budget, but we failed to make it in the capital improvement section, so we'll be making that adjustment. So that is an error that we failed to catch.
Okay. Thank you very much. First off, council comments, who would like to start?
I'll start. Thank you. You answered a lot of my questions just by your, your quick update there. But on page two, and I was hoping we did the healthcare first before the budget.
I wanted to, but we have a statutory requirement that makes it, we have to hold the budget hearing as the first substantive item on the agenda.
Okay, no problem.
And I just took soccer first because it kind of hinged on it.
Yeah, I guess it gets home. The issue I have is apparently we're going to see some decrease in health costs.
That's correct.
So on page two, we talk about absorbing still 5% increase, the increase. Are we still going to do that even if we see a significant decrease in health?
Right. We budgeted 5%, and we're pretty much at the 5%. We made some adjustments to decline a little bit because it went to about 4.3. But we better, basically, we met our target. That's, that was the goal, was to meet 5%.
And again, we're going back to the healthcare agenda item, but I see the increase would only be 1.9%.
Right. But then we still have the consultant commission within that, that's on top of that. No? Okay.
Ann Maria Studdly, managing director of the Garing Group. The overall impact to the recommendation that's before you would be a 3.6% increase in the budget item. And that is inclusive of our compensation and also the new healthcare reform fees.
Thank you very much.
So we moved items around, and then also the retiree healthcare fees increased.
Okay, but in the narrative, we're still going to be paying the 5% increase even though we're only increasing by 3.6%?
Right. So right now, it's budgeted at around, it was about approximately 5%. So we had a, we had a, we had a, in this budget, we had retiree healthcare budgeted, and now it went down because she was able to get a decrease. So, so it's a little over budgeted right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, yeah. So I just think we need to take that into consideration after.
It's up to council.
Up to council, I think it should be, yeah.
I mean, if we're, if we have a little bit of money in the budget based on money that's not being spent on healthcare at the six-month.
That's what I would recommend.
Point, we can make whatever changes we need to make. I mean, it's budgeted, but I mean, we're going to be able to do whatever we need to do as we're going forward.
I understand that, but I, I also understand the issue the city has with its reserves, and I think that if we can capture that money and make sure it goes into reserves and, and not just, you know, transferred for some other project, that's the appropriate way to do it. I'm just trying to be fiscally responsible. When I see a decrease in healthcare benefits, down, you know, from 15% down to three point, when you say 3.7%, yet you want to pay back to employees another 5%, I think that money can go back into the coffers for reserves in case there's an emergency.
You never really, you don't ever actually put the money in reserves until the end of the year, so.
Well.
So, you know, keeping there and putting it in another line item, it's just going to be the same.
In another line item, rather than, than it to be assumed, because that's what the narrative says. On page six, I'm a little confused about the demographics. The demographics don't add up to 100% at the bottom. 21%, 20%, 92%, and 2%. So not sure where the other 38% of our population is.
I'm sorry, for.
The very bottom.
Okay. Well, that's probably due to rounding, but we can look into that.
Okay. Just take a look at that. And then on page 22, I'm just wondering why it says actual estimated and then estimated, and we don't have the adopted budget for 1213 as the column? Because there's nothing to reference back and forth to. It's page 22?
I'm sorry. Can I go run back to your demographics real quick?
Yep.
Because I just looked at it while you were talking. The city's total population, these subcategories aren't meant to add up to 100%. They're just, they're categories of interest. So, you know, 21% are younger than 18. Those are your children, military, 65-years-old. That's, those are demographics of interest to local government because they have impacts on our services. So that's why they're, they're called out. But that's not intended to add up to 100%.
Okay.
Okay.
Page 22, just wondering why we don't have the adopted budget as a column? It says actual 1112, and then it says total unrestricted 84, 853. That obviously.
Because an adopted budget doesn't put anything in fund balance. It's the end of the year that is when you achieve your fund balance. So the audit is where you're going to see your fund balance?
Yeah, I have that note. I know it shows when we do our audit, but I'm just curious why it was not there. Let me answer that question. I'm a little curious about page 57, the increase from adopted budget 1213, $30,000 for legal services is from the CRA to $70,000. I assume, and I know, you know, the issue with the clerk of courts, why would the CRA be the one to pay for any action taken against from, by the clerk of courts? Wouldn't it be the city?
No, I do.
The CRA didn't?
There was a CRA budget, a CRA decision, and a CRA project.
To?
To spend CRA money on public safety. I'm assuming that's what the clerk is going to be filing litigation to the city on. That's what he kept saying.
The CRA did not have anything to do with those expenditures. They were done via, via mid-year budget transfer by the city. Go ahead, Jim.
I think in part two, it depends on who the clerk decides to sit.
Okay.
Which we don't have any control over that.
And so I assume, I see that the Master A1A streetscape money was taken out, the $97,850 from the budget that was presented to us last time?
Yeah, that was reprogrammed to legal services, and then we put funds in the beach access improvements because the Shell Street keeps getting bigger and bigger every time we're talking about it.
I think that's it.
Thank you. We'll go to council.
I've had my questions answered. I will make the comment that I think it's a sad day when we need to reprogram money for legal fees because people are bent on telling lies about the city. That's a very sad commentary, and those responsible, those doing it, should stop it.
Thank you. Any further comment from council? Okay, at this time, open it up for public comment on this agenda item. Citizens of Satellite Beach first, the floor is open. Any other further public comment?
Richard Charvin, 485 Kale Street, 619 North Robert Way, 380 Willow Drive, 8 Emerald Lorraine mentioned the sad day of having to put money aside for litigation, but we heard something also from the city manager. And I listened to some of this Bill Mitt Nick or whatever this guy, he's an idiot. But I listened to this, and I went online to look at some of the stuff that was from Vavard Times, is that it? Vavard Times. And they made allegations that Andy Anderson and Matt Reed are somehow complicit in this whole thing. I've known these guys for 10 years.
What are you talking about?
That's just a bunch of nonsense.
Sir, budget item.
Oh, budget item, sorry.
Only on the budget.
Okay.
Excuse me, in the back, please.
She talked about having to put money aside.
Right, it's on the budget.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Further comments? Here are none, bring it back to council.
You have two first readings.
Yes, I'm sorry, let me get to that. Okay. I got to read first, or read first. Part B, ordinance number 1076. Jim?
Ordinance number 1076, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Vavard County, Florida, adopting the tentative levying of ad valorem taxes by establishing an operating millage rate of 8.3206 mils for fiscal year 2013-2014, providing an effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance number 1076.
Excuse me, I think you're reading it out of the book. You should be reading this one where it says the final.
Okay.
Got a ton of it.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'll read it again.
An ordinance of the, ordinance number 1076, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Vavard County, Florida, adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes by establishing an operating millage rate of 8.3206 mils for fiscal year 2013-2014, providing an effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance number 1076.
Move to adopt on the first reading.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro, to adopt ordinance number 1076 on first reading. Any further council comments? Here are none, open it up to the public on ordinance number 1076. Here are none, back to council. There are no further comments, Lenore?
Councilman Dug?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman O'Neal?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Passes five, nothing. Moving on to part C, ordinance number 1077.
Ordinance number 1077, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Vavard County, Florida, adopting FY 2013-2014 budget, providing an effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance number 1077.
Move to adopt on the first reading.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro, to adopt on first reading. Any further comment from council? Here are none, open it up to the public on ordinance number 1077. Here are none, bring it back to council.
Courtney, I just want to say, nice job by you and your team on this. This is really well done. It was, for lack of better words, an easy read and just flowed really well. So thank you to you and your team for everything you've done to put this together.
I just wanted also to extend our thanks to our Councilwoman Gott, who has helped us tremendously with editing and helping us put, you know, the final edits together. She's spent a lot of time on it. We really appreciate her efforts. Thank you.
Hearing no further comment from council? A little repol, please.
Councilman Dug?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman O'Neal?
Yes.
Councilman O'Neal?
Yes.
Councilman O'Neal?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Courtney. Thank you very much to department heads that helped her. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item number 11, which is discuss and take action on ability to move forward with administrative land use and zoning change for the property located at 1753 Highway A1A.
Thank you, council. The, this item is a request from staff to basically allow us to provide, to create and take through an application to change the land use and zoning. Basically, y'all are familiar with this property, it's Sun on the Beach property. It's owned by Mr. Allison, who's here tonight. What we would like to do is change this residential land use and zoning to a commercial land use and zoning. Right now, it's a non-conforming use, which very much limits the owner, as well as any of the businesses, from doing any improvements to the property. And given the fact that, you know, it's probably going to be commercial for a very long time, well, all we're doing is ensuring it's declined. So I think we need, it's in our best interest to move it back to a commercial use. Since Mr. Allison had really no part in making it residential, we would recommend that you allow us to do this and foot the bill for the advertising to move it forward, and that would give us the ability, or myself the ability, to move it through the boards and argue our points in making it, you know, back to commercial. So that's what we would, we're asking for your direction to move forward with that, and we're hoping to have it done, hopefully by the end of October.
So is this something we're doing by consensus, as, you know, as long as we're okay?
Yes, right now, we can do consensus.
You're going to bring it back to the boards for their approval, and then it comes back and?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Listen. Council comments on this agenda item? I go out this time?
I support this, and I understand that there are a couple more properties in the city that fall into the same situation, and maybe we should be taking a look at them , too.
Great. Thank you.
I echo those comments.
Councilman Dug?
I had a chance to talk to Courtney earlier one morning about this. She gave me a call, and I think the concept's a good one and do support us moving forward with this.
Great. At this time, I'll open up Agenda Item number 11 for public comment. Here are none, bring it back to council. You just needed consensus? One of you, or do you want a motion?
It would be good actually to give me a motion because we're, we're doing a lot of work into it. We're spending the money.
A move that we move forward with an administrative small-scale land use amendment and rezoning application to change the land use and zoning for 1753 A1A from residential to commercial.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any further comment from council? Here are none, Lenore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman O'Neal?
Yes.
Councilman O'Neal?
Yes.
Chair Dug?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Everybody finally take a break for?
Keep going.
Keep going. Just checking for everybody. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item number 12, discuss take action on results of the Garing Group request for proposal renewal summary for employees' healthcare. Courtney?
Thank you. We have our consultant here this evening to provide a presentation. We did rebid out our healthcare package as promised with our new consultant, the Garing Group. I think you'll be very impressed with their work, as I was, and this is Anna Marie, and she leads their team. So we also are uploading it here.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Now in order, Anna Maria Studdly, the managing director of the Garing Group. Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, council member, city manager, attorney, and clerk. We are very excited to be engaged with your team. And I'd like to take the time to compliment your team led by Courtney, city manager. They are very professional and very passionate about serving the city and your employees and retirees. And that came out very clearly in our analysis and process. I have with me Dustin Keen, who is the primary analyst and took the lead in the actual marketing and RFP and analysis. So we'd like to present to you what we believe is very favorable findings. Can you all hear? Can you?
No.
Do you mind sitting here to do that?
It's a better microphone so people can hear you.
From New York, that's not usually your problem. Okay. So we're real excited about presenting to you the findings and the process and just kind of giving you a little background of where we've been. The first thing we want to do, and what we initially do when we come in to a group, is to look at the claims experience. And we take an independent perspective of how the program is done. And we want to look at least two years back. So you'll see on this first slide that the time period for your plan year, and your plan year typically runs October one through September thirtieth. You'll see that for the eleven-twelve plan year, that the premium that was paid in collectively, both from the city and from payroll deductions for the portion that the employee pays towards the dependent premium, was eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. You'll see that just claims, not including their administration costs to operate the program and network and fees and so forth, the claims paid out in that same period of time was eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So you'll see that the loss ratio came in at ninety-nine point nine. That's about as close as you can get. For every dollar that you put in in premium was spent out in claims. And again, that doesn't include admin. The average enrolled employee count, and when we say employee in here, that includes your retiree population, was eighty-seven. So you can see that your claims per employee per month running, were running at a little over eight hundred and twenty dollars. When we came in, obviously, we're not done with the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen year. We did get an extension of one month on all of your carrier renewals that were due for October with no increase to allow us the appropriate time to check the marketplace. So the recommendations before you will be for eleven-one. And to honor that continuity and have appropriate time to get in front of your employees and retirees and explain the program once you approve. In the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen year, which is year-to-date, October through May, you'll see that the premium paid out was a total of five hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. The claims so far paid out are four hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. Of those claims, five large claims pursuit came to be that are paid dollar amounts in this period of time, over twenty-five thousand. Of those five, two have had over a hundred thousand dollars paid. So that is a little not typical in a group your size and also in your past history. You'll have some large claims statistically. That's what insurance is for. But you're running with some significant claims that are projected to be ongoing. So you'll see that the loss ratio is ninety point four percent year-to-date. Now, carriers and also healthcare reform for a group your size are looking for claims in the norm to be provided with a trend increase at around eighty-five percent. Because in healthcare reform, they can't have on their book of business more than fifteen percent towards administration. And anything else has to be paid to claims or that they have to rebate or pay back the membership. Okay, so when we look at a renewal, we actually look at what we call a rolling twelve. When an underwriter is looking, they don't want old stale data. They want the most current. And they look at a full twelve months of mature data, which you have because you renewed with Health First through these years. So you'll see in the yellow, the prior twelve months, you paid in just under eight hundred thousand dollars in premium. And in claims, the carrier paid eight hundred and twenty-three thousand. So unfortunately, when we look at the rolling twelve, you have a highlight of all of those high months and you're at a hundred and three percent without what we would say is about fifteen percent in admin. So for every dollar paid in, they paid a dollar three out in claims. And your average claims per employee was eight hundred and nine dollars. You'll also note at the bottom that nine point five percent of the total enrollment has generated fifty-one percent of the claims for the rolling twelve. And again, that's June to May. We like to always do a bar graph on the old lady in the group. I've been in the business for thirty-three years. So I like this whole picture stuff. It gives me a real down and dirty quit. You'll see that we have charted the per employee per month claims cost. And that yellow will show you how it's trending. It's not going at a drastic increase, but obviously it is going at an increase. And we'd like to have it stable or go down. So we're real excited about the opportunity to explore options around the clinic and a way to get in front of this. Okay? So we came on board and we met with city management. And we also met with your senior staff. And everybody agreed that the market was pretty good for a group your size. There's also other funding options that sometimes are available in your group your size. And we thought best interest of the city, let's do a full bid. So the RFP was released in July of two thousand thirteen. And we put all lines of coverage out to bid. And the reason we do that is because a lot of the carriers are providing incentives that if you put a second line of coverage with them, they will give you an additional discount on your medical premium. And usually, that is a very favorable thing whenever we can leverage it. So you'll see the proposals were asked to match current schedule of benefits as closely as possible. They're filed products, so they vary a little bit. And the product and the recommendation before you had does have slight variations off of the program that you currently have, but it's still considered very rich and high in the benchmark of sister cities. Medical proposals were received from four carriers. They were received from Cigna, Florida Blue, which is the new name for Blue Cross Blue Shield, the Florida League of Cities utilizing United Healthcare as their network and administrator, and Health First, who is your incumbent. The HMO plan, you currently have two programs that are offered. You have eighty-nine people enrolled at the time we did the bid in the HMO plan. Cigna came in with two offers. They came in with a two point four percent on the medical if you eliminate that second plan, the PPO POS. And they only offer the HMO. And that we checked and you'll see, we'll talk about network to just make sure that doing that wasn't going to hurt people, especially those out of the area, which are the retirees that have provided service.
Anna Marie, can you explain what a PPO POS is?
Yes. A PPO and POS. POS sometimes has a gatekeeper in network, which means you have to go to the primary care physician to get a referral. Most POSs these days have eliminated that because they thought it saved a lot of money and it really didn't. But either way, a PPO and a POS are in and out of network programs that the member gets to use and decide at the time of service whether they want to utilize an in-network provider or an out-of-network provider. And where they go for care determines how rich or weak that benefit is. An HMO, you're obligated to stay in the network unless you have something like threatening urgent that requires care. Okay? So you'll see that the Cigna offered, if you continue with the two-plan option, a four point five two percent. This includes a multi-line discount because they did put a dental proposal on the table. And they offered you an additional one percent discount off of the medical rates, which was a savings of approximately nine thousand dollars. The annual increase that they were proposing, if it was a single-option plan, was twenty-two thousand dollars a year. Forty thousand, six hundred if you kept the two-plan options. That also for Florida Blue was four point eight percent. And they were offering both plans. And forty, that was forty-three dollars, four hundred and twenty-four. Forty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. Florida League of Cities came in at fourteen point eight three percent, which was interesting because usually they are very much in the ballpark. And I did have a conversation with them and they really wanted to enter, to have, be entertained, but they just could not at this stage with what they saw in the claims price the way that we needed them to. That was a hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred dollar increase. And Health First came in, this is your existing carrier, at a fifteen point six four percent increase, which was interesting because it was right out where we told they, the verbal first offer was, which when we did a production, we called for a little bit more, especially adding healthcare reform fees. But we knew we had a very good market and that there were folks out there that might be interested. So if you look at the POS plan, I won't spend a whole lot of time here. You only had three employees enrolled. These are typically going to be the folks with out-of-area dependence and your retirees that are out of your immediate area because your Health First network is more regional. It stays right here. Again, five point five percent increase for Cigna if you do the dual option, which is just over seventeen hundred. Eight point three five on the Florida Blue, twenty-six hundred. Nineteen point four two with Florida League, that's another six thousand. And Health First was at the fifteen point six four, which was just under five thousand. When we look at programs, we look at benefit structure to make sure that we're getting the best that we possibly can for your members. And we look at pricing. But we also, especially if we see pricing and benefits that show some options, we want to make sure the network is going to be accessible to your patient base, your membership, because that's where they get the discounted rate and the better benefits. So you'll see that we use industry standards with the primary care physician. We wanted one within twenty-five miles. Health First comes in at two nineteen. And within five miles, it's twenty-one. Cigna came in with a nationwide seamless network. This is why we are recommending that you go with the single-option program because they have a national network. They're not a local entity. And therefore, any retiree located out of the area and/or state, along with any dependent child that may be at school or with another custodial guardian or parent, as long as there are providers in their area, they can get the in-network benefits and use the plan just like somebody here at home. You'll see they have three hundred and eighty-four within twenty-five miles and twenty-one within five. So it's actually a stronger network. Florida Blue, Blue Care, four hundred, three hundred and forty-two within twenty-five, nineteen within five. They have a guesting process for HMO participants that we can apply if there's a network outside of Florida with another Blue program or we can do the dual option, which is what they propose. United Healthcare Nationwide Network, two ninety-one, twenty-five. Specialists, again, I'm just going to go within five miles because you've got really good results. Seventy-two in Health First, Cigna one oh three, Florida Blue ninety-six, and United Healthcare one oh eight, which was good because all the proposers that we entertained had bigger networks. Hospitals, six with Health First, nine with Cigna, and this is within twenty-five miles. Florida Blue, eleven, and United Healthcare, eight. So it confirmed that there was adequate access and more than adequate access for your membership for any of the proposers that we entertained. The dental, the RFP was released again alongside the other lines of coverage. Proposers were asked to match the current benefits as close as possible. It's a lot easier to match dental benefits than it is to medical. Dental proposals were received from thirteen carriers. All thirteen carriers put lower pricing on the table than your current cost. Eight carriers matched the current benefits or proposed enhanced benefits. Cigna proposed an additional one percent, as I said, multi-line discount off of the medical rate. And that is an estimated additional nine percent on the medical, nine thousand dollars on the medical if the city purchases dental alongside the medical with Cigna. Interestingly enough, the Cigna dental alone was a six point three percent reduction and an additional three hundred and ninety-seven, three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars savings on top of the medical savings if you pair it with the dental and medical. Okay, life and AD&amp;D, this is CityCost. We had many.
What is AD&amp;D, please?
Accidental death and dismemberment. Line of coverage, again, we have four proposers. Principal, which was your incumbent, they provided a renewal with a twelve-month guarantee. It was a plan match and it was a twenty-three percent discount, a decrease off of current cost, which was interesting because that's your current plan. So we were excited to see that the competitive market was able to be leveraged. Reliant Standard matched the benefits that you currently offer with a three-year rate lock with a thirty-nine point seven percent decrease, which was about two thousand dollars, just under two thousand dollars savings. Sun Life, twenty-four months, thirty-eight point one percent increase. The Standard, thirty-seven percent increase with a three-year lock. Employee Assistance Program, we put this out. We looked at the utilization, talked to your existing carrier. And we're happy to say that your members are using this. You actually are getting better than the norm returns on this investment. And this is a really good thing. So we went out there. They were again asked to match the benefits as close as possible. We received three proposals. Your current plan is within resources. And it was in a rate lock until October of next year. The Hartford proposed five-session model at a fifty-four percent decrease in rates. Magellan proposed six sessions, six-session model at a thirty-six percent decrease, which was just under a thousand dollars savings a year. Sun Life proposed five at sixty-seven percent. And we like, and you'll see the recommendation from Magellan because we like the fact there's an additional offering and an enhancement to the benefit, especially because your folks are using and like it. The Vision, you currently have an arrangement where you offer an employee a reimbursement on any vision expenses equal to two hundred and twenty-five dollars every two years. Your staff administers this and physically gets the invoices and writes the bill. So we were trying to get something a little bit more comprehensive. And we also thought it'd be great, if the pricing came in right, to offer it to employees for their dependence and to allow more of a benefit for less of a cost. So the RFP was released. We received seven carriers. We have been able to, through these proposals, provide richer benefits at lower cost. Benefits are extended in these proposers to dependents. And the members will benefit from network discounts. So even within the program design, by having discounts, they'll be able to receive more care because it's at discounted rates. Ease of administration, it'll take the pressure and the responsibility off staff for the bookkeeping. And the financial analysis that was performed to compare the city's current cost toward the Vision reimbursement plan, the estimated increase to the city for offering a more comprehensive vision insurance to employees and their dependents is a little over a thousand dollars a year. So our recommendations, both city staff and Gearing Group, would be to move forward with the transition effective November one for medical and dental to the Cigna healthcare plan that's proposed in before you. And that would allow us to realize an additional two percent discount for having only one program priced and having that nationwide seamless network. It would also allow us an additional one percent by bundling the dental and the medical together. Overall, medical premium increase would be two point four five percent and a decrease of six point three percent for the dental off of what we were looking at with the fifteen point six percent on your incumbent. That totaled annual savings compared to the Health First medical renewal would be just about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year. The life and AD&amp;D, our recommendation is to go with Reliant Standard with the thirty-nine point seven percent decrease, realizing just under a two thousand dollars savings and locking that rate in for three years. Vision, we'd like to recommend introducing a full-scope comprehensive vision program with a network for employees and benefits. And that rate is locked in for four years, forty-eight months. And then the Employee Assistance Program, moving to Magellan to realize that one thousand dollar discount, but more importantly, to provide enhanced benefits for a benefit that is utilized. We've given you a snapshot of the spreadsheet that we wound up with. Health First is in the first column. And you'll see in each column, there is an employee cost, there is an employer cost, and there is a total monthly cost. And then we take to the bottom and we take totals based on current enrollment snapshots in the yellow for monthly and annual. And that's how we come up with our increases. in the yellow for monthly and annual, and that's how we come up with our increases. And you'll see, as you go from the top of the page, you have a health section in blue, dental section in green, vision in purple, life, AD&amp;D in blue, and then your EAP. These assume that you continue with the existing contribution strategy of 100% for single, 50% for dependent, on active, and 100% for retirees. You'll see that the Health First renewal, if we go to that second column, the city cost is circled at the bottom for all those lines of coverage, would be a 14.5% increase, or just under $112,000 a year. The employee would also realize a 13.9% increase and out-of-pocket through payroll deductions would be just under $28,000. Our recommendation is alternative one, we've provided you monthly calculations and also what it would impact per pay period, which is 24 deductions. So you'll see, if you look at Cigna, that's where I was getting the 3.6% at the bottom, the employees would only realize through payroll deduction a 1.1% increase with these recommended changes. Overall, the monthly savings would be just under $29,000 from what we were looking at with your Health First renewal and your other incumbent carriers.
Thank you.
I'm open to questions, if anybody has-
Thank you very much. Counsel, questions?
Yeah, I do. So it's basically, it's a requirement that we bundle the medical and dental together in order to get these rates, is that what you're saying?
In order to get the additional 1%, yes.
Okay.
It's equates to about the $9,000 of the savings that were captured in this spreadsheet.
I mean, I've heard the discussion bantered around over the years that dental may not necessarily be a great plan to have, that the payout for what you get from the dentist is not exactly what you end up paying in to get the insurance. Have you got any thoughts on that at all?
You know, it's interesting because I think it's a very individual choice, and depending on what you're using it for, absolutely. You do have caps on it because it is a PPO, and maybe next year, we can look at more of a DHMO that doesn't have a dollar cap on it.
Okay.
I think that what we can do is survey your membership, and we will physically have a team out here with your staff doing open enrollment meetings and get feedback to be able to see and answer that specific to your city. But yes, it is something that we hear from some of the population, but you can see by the enrollment that you have a significant population enrolled in the program, and I have to assume that they've received benefits year over year from it, that they found meaningful. I mean, just for a dental checkup.
And that's really all, what's covered with that insurance, do you know off the top of the year?
Oh yeah, absolutely. You have an annual benefit maximum of $1,500 per year, per member. It has a $50 calendar year deductible for a single employee, and then it has a family max of three times, 150. The plan waives the deductible for preventative, and it's paid at 100%. So there is encouragement, and there's full coverage for those preventative exams for them, their checkups, and so on and so forth. The basic is paid at 90%, you have a rich plan, it pays 90% in-network and 80% out. Major is 60% in, 50% out, and you do offer orthodontic coverages to children, which is the braces. And again, that orthodontics has a separate maximum of $1,500 per lifetime. Will $1,500 cover an orthodontic treatment? No. But will it help take a good bite out of it? Yes, especially if I'm in-network because I'm getting discounted rates.
Okay. Second question I have is regarding the medical. So many of the procedures nowadays are AM-Surge procedures and that sort of thing. What's the coverage on deductibles, AM-Surge, and?
What's your acronym mean, AM-Surge?
Ambulatory surgery, in other words, same-day surgery.
Outpatient surgeries?
Yeah, outpatient surgery.
Outpatient services in the plan that you were recommending has a calendar year deductible applied of $500, and whoops, sorry, wrong plan. I'm like, whoa, that's not the plan. Let's see, it matches, actually, it's kind of in line with what you have. Right now, for outpatient services, the member would pay $250 per occurrence. The new proposed plan, they would pay $150 per occurrence and 15% of the discounted rate, not to exceed the out-of-pocket limit, which is 3,000, and matches exactly worst-case scenario of what you have now.
Okay.
That was the part of the plan that the employees are seeing a decrease in the benefit on?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's good because you want to encourage outpatient services whenever possible versus a hospitalization and additional cost to the plan.
Good.
So again, even in the recommended plan, it's a very rich plan, and this plan has no calendar year deductible either.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Good questions.
Further counsel questions?
How much involvement or input did the staff have in this?
We had, right after we received the bids and met with the gearing group, we had a meeting with the employees the day, two days later, to go over, basically, there's two responses that interest us, which was Florida Blue and Cigna. And then we ended up having two more meetings, so they can, so we can basically explain and make sure they really understand why we were moving to Cigna and why we were recommending that. Basically, there was still some concerns with the hospital, particularly from your lower-paid staff, you know, that might have to face a $3,000 bill, you know, in the future. But they saw the savings to the city, and they understand that, and they were willing to move forward with that.
So they're on board with the recommendations?
Yes.
Further counsel comments?
No.
Okay. At this time, open it up for this agenda item to public comments. Here and none back to counsel?
I'm going to abstain from voting because my wife is a retiree, and she lies under this plan, so I will not be voting.
Thank you.
I want to move that we approve the recommendations from the gearing group to update medical, dental, vision, life, AD&amp;D, and EAP insurance carriers and benefits for Satellite Beach employees.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, do I have a second? Second. I have a second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Further discussion from counsel?
I just want to say congratulations to the staff, I know that some of this stuff was pretty archaic, having to turn in a receipt for eyeglasses and not having your dependents covered, so also want to thank Courtney for being real thoughtful about looking into the cost savings for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment from counsel? Here and none, Lenore?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Motion carries, four, nothing, with Councilman Montanaro abstaining. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff, for the hard work and employees. At this time, we're going to take a 10-minute break, recess. We're going to eight. I'd like to reconvene the city council meeting, Satellite Beach, September 4. Moving on to agenda item number eight, which will be present a proclamation recognized in September 6, 2013 as Local Works Day. Let me read it. Whereas our nation has proud history of its local governments providing meaningful services on behalf of the American people, and whereas local government has traditionally worked with citizens to create a strong sense of community, excuse me, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the Florida Local Government Coalition encourages Florida's associations to promote local government services and proclaims a local works day in celebration of its members, excuse me, of its member association and the essential roles they play to be held on September 6, 2013. Now therefore, I, Frank Picatino, Mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 6, 2013 as Local Works Day in Satellite Beach, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues facing the city and recognize the contribution which local government officials, employees, and volunteers make every day to our health, safety, and comfort and quality of life to assure that the City of Satellite Beach is a perfect place to grow. That's a proclamation on Local Works Day. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number nine, discuss, take action on Resolution 937.
Resolution number 937, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, relating to National Estuaries Day and the Hands Across the Lagoon Event, September 28, 2013, providing an effective date and providing for adoption.
Move to adopt Resolution 937.
Motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Vice Mayor Breimer, to adopt Resolution 937. Any further comments from counsel? Here and none, open it up to the public. Public comment on agenda item number nine? Here and none, back to counsel, Lenore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGowan?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, five, nothing. I have item 14 now, is that correct? Agenda item for our council meeting, September 18, 2013.
For that meeting, we will be, you'll be approving your last second readings on the budget. We also have a goal to have the list of discharge ordinance as well as the fertilizer ordinance on this agenda.
Okay. Any other agenda items counsel would like to see at this time?
Yeah, I would, even though it's going to be past 9/11, I would still like to see a proclamation, that's really all I wanted, similar to workers-
Sorry, I thought you wanted a sermon.
No, just a proclamation declaring 9/11 Patriots' Day. And I also sent Courtney an email, I would like to see a proclamation declaring-
Right.
-the week of the 17th, Constitution Week.
Any other additions to the agenda at this time? If you have any additions, please give staff adequate notice, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 15, appointments to boards. One question, we have an application for the Board of Adjustments, Ken Farson, who could not be here because he's out of town, I don't know if anybody knows him.
I do, Mr. Mayor, I think he's certainly a good candidate, I've known this man for probably five or six years at least, but I think he'd be a good candidate for this board.
Do we need to?
Interview him?
Yes. Do we need to interview him, or can we, do we have to interview him? Let me put it this way.
Our council policies and procedures require-
That's right, I'm bringing it up just so we have on the floor, we have to, okay.
Is that, Lorraine, is that 100% correct? Because I know in the past, like with David Schechter, we chose not to interview him for-
If it's a new appointee.
New appointee, okay, okay.
One thing too, since we're on boards, I talked to Courtney a little bit about this, I would like to see us, when we do reappoint someone, not that it would make a difference whether I voted for him or against him, if they are attending the meetings, great, I mean, if they attend 60%, 70%, fine, if they're down there and coming to 20%, to reappoint them doesn't make that board function, it's nothing against that person, but I want to make sure the boards function, and we're not in that stage in some of these boards now. So I just want to, somehow, when we get this information, if it's possible, that if we're reappointing people who don't come to the meetings, it's not helping us.
Yeah, actually, that was on my radar screen, and I was going to send an email, I think maybe we need to get an attendance sheet and look at the attendance of the boards, because there is, there's issues getting quorum's, especially with these quasi-dedition boards, and people are coming out and spending money, and then you don't have a quorum, and it becomes a real big problem.
I just want the system to work, and I think we can, you know, we'll know where we stand at, so just an idea.
We've talked about this before, and I agree with you.
Okay.
Someone who used to chair the Board of Adjustment, who shall be nameless, did up an attendance form for that board, and it could be used for all of the boards to record attendance at meetings.
I just think it's important, we've got to make sure these boards-
We actually have a spreadsheet that we can use for every board, and we'll just have to make sure that the secretary's included, and if you'd like, I can put that as an attachment to each reappointed consideration, so you'll actually see what they're doing, so that we can do process forward.
And there was a period of time where Barbara Montanaro was bringing that information forward, so we'd have some of that, it was hitting this, but we, the system's there, like Lenore said, if we can just implement it, it's all ready to go.
I just want to make sure we have, when people have items before a board, that the board, that we can function, so. Okay, moving on to this agenda item, we have a reappointment, so I have some motions.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that would be a group thing. Ms. Billman's name is down here for the Recreation Board, and it's my understanding that her attendance has not been very attentive for that board, and so-
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt, I think, just to give you the information, she has declined to be reappointed.
Oh, okay. In that case, I would move that we reappoint David Ryan to the Government Employees Retirement Plans Board, Brenda Sletter to the Library Board, Clint Brasswell to the Recreation Board, Brian Gilcher to Sampson's Island Park Committee, and Salvatore LaRachella to the Sampson's Island Park Committee. All of those appointments to end on, to run through October-
On the respective dates.
Of the respective dates for those boards.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any further discussion from counsel? Here and none, public comment on this agenda item? Here and none, bring it back to counsel.
I just have a question on here, it has like applicants, and it has Ken, and then Linda Loiseau for CPAB and CRA, how come we don't have her? Yeah, please do, I know.
Ken Farson and Linda Loiseau are currently on the table.
Oh, okay. Did I see her, what's her, her application wasn't in here though, okay.
They're on the interview.
Okay.
Any further comment? We have a motion, Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGowan?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries, moving on, one of, we got some vacancies here, Courtney, maybe, you know, on the city website, or, so we can start getting these, or counsel, if we know people, skip and fill. Okay, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 16, adoption of minutes.
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes of the July 31 special meeting and the August 7 regular meeting.
As submitted?
As submitted.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gott. Any further comments?
I just want to say, Lenore, I know I've said it before, but I want to say it again, this is, these meeting minute notes are very concise, easy to read, and great job on the way it's been put together, thank you.
Opening up, any public comment? Here and none, back to counsel. Lenore?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman McGowan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. Motion carries. One thing I want to thank, the staff, Courtney, thank your staff, please, great job on presentation and putting the packet for the budget together, and the healthcare stuff was great, I think it shows that we need to definitely go out and RFP more often, and-
Get your eyes examined.
Any further?
Yeah, Lenore, what date does the retirement boards, do the retirement boards meet?
Yeah, 4/18, we have to meet on Halloween, it's in November.
November, okay. And is that at 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon?
It's 3:00.
3:00, okay.
I also wanted to remind counsel, you're going to have a code enforcement workshop on October 1, so pencil that in, and we'll put it on the calendar for your next council meeting. A code enforcement workshop, so we're preparing for that now, it's the materials for you.
October 1.
Yes.
Okay, so we have the 18th is really our only meeting, other than whatever board we're to for the rest of the month, correct? That and a crack. Okay, just want to make- we're to for the rest of the month, correct? That and a crack. Okay. Just want to make sure. I thought there was one other. Okay. Any further business before counsel? Here and none, meeting adjourned. Achievements, I need to see.